Hey, Jordan.
Hey, Anne, how are you?
I'm good. I'm gonna be dark for a second while I shove some food in my face. My last meeting ran long. Good to see you. Happy New Year.
Thank you. Bon appétit.
So everybody here, it's not quite, one, two, three, four, looks like we have a quorum. Has anybody heard from either Counselor Prestizo or Greider?
I do know that Counselor Greider had a potential conflict tonight with the community event through her work.
I remember. She said that she would probably be late. I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
Nope, that was as much info as I had.
And then, but you haven't heard from Prestizo?
I have not.
Okay. I'm gonna send him a text and then go ahead and get us started.
Great. And Hector will be joining us. His computer is going through an update right now. So I will go ahead and start us off until Hector can take on his duties.
Okay, so we have a quorum. Let's go ahead and get started. Getting my agenda in order here. So I'll call the TORA regular meeting of January 10th to order at 6:00 PM. Roll call, please.
Really? Member Byers.
Here.
Member Panomaroff.
Here.
Member Paray Miller.
Here.
Member Clark.
Here.
I'm going to note that Member Prestizo and Member Greider are currently absent. And Chair Iris Flynn.
Here.
Great, Chair, you do have a quorum tonight.
Thank you. Item number two on the agenda is speakers heard on non-agenda item. Do we have any speaker request forms tonight?
Thank you. I'm gonna quickly pop into our public testimony folder just to double check. So if you don't mind giving me one minute here. And I see no requests for speakers heard on non-agenda items tonight.
Okay, thank you. Item number three on the agenda is the consent calendar. There's the financial packet for November of 2022 and the financial packet of December 2022. Has everybody had a chance to review the financial packets? And let the record show that Member Prestizo is joining the meeting at 6:04. So we're on the consent calendar with financial packets from November and December of 2022. Has everybody had a chance to review the financials? Are there any questions or comments? All right. So with that, I will entertain a motion.
I'm sorry, I got here a little late. I'm not sure what we're motioning on.
We are making a mo- we're, I'm entertaining a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Oh.
Member Clark?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Right, Member Byers?
Yeah.
Member Panomaroff?
Yes.
Member Clark?
Yes.
Member Prestizo?
Yes.
Member Paray Miller?
Yeah.
The motion passes.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is 4.1, Agreement with the OHCS for Gateway Transitional Housing Program. Staff?
Yes, and I apologize for everyone. I do have a PowerPoint tonight, but I'm unable to share screens since I am not the technical host yet. So I'm gonna go ahead and give a verbal report, but the staff report will also share the same information in the agenda packet. So the agency has been working with OHCS to negotiate a draft agreement for us taking on ownership of the travel trailers for use at the gateway site. I was hopeful that we would have that language to share with you all tonight. The DOJ has not yet released it, but they said any day now. So when they do release it, I will convene a special meeting for you all to review and vote. The draft that OHCS and TORA submitted to DOJ for review was for up to $75,000 to provide the agency reimbursements for the different costs associated with taking on ownership. Those costs include registration, titling, and a first year of insurance. The agreement also limits the use of the trailers and specifies that to change the use or to dispose of the trailers, we do need to coordinate with the state to do so. So that is the basis of this agreement. The other update to give on this topic is that we are working with Access for a lease for when they take over the program from Roquetree. And so both the agreement with the state as well as the lease with Access will come before you all at a meeting hopefully around mid-January.
Thank you, staff. Does anybody have any questions? I have, I wanna ask about the language that is in the staff report where it says the agreement also limits the use of the trailers of two fire survivors and specifics that TORA can only change the use or dispose of the trailers with explicit permission by the state. And so by, I read that, I read that to mean that we will be able to dispose of the trailers as long as we have their permission, right? That's not a, you may dispose them or you may not dispose them. It's more of a, you can dispose them, but you need, you're gonna need some sort of permission or authorization. Does that, do I understand that correctly?
Way to interpret it is the state is not yet sure what they want to happen to the trailers once the transitional housing program is done.
Okay.
I have approached the state to request that we could have a program where we could somehow transfer ownership to the families living in them. I know the state is very interested in keeping them so that they could use them for other emergency disaster deployment. So we've really just kicked that can down the road a bit for discussions on what's most needed with those trailers in the future.
Well, I'm, I'm actually, if it were any kind of agreement other than us being able to just decide how to transfer the ownership over to the, to the folks, the next best thing is that they wanna hold on to them for transitional housing moving down the road. So I'm gratified to hear that. And it does sort of explain why they're paying for the transfer fees, which confused me a little bit, pleased me, but confused me. So that's, that's good. Thank you. That's what I wanted to hear. I guess I would just ask your opinion or your gut feeling, and you know, if you don't have one, I'm, I'm fine with that. Do you, do you think that the state is inclined to have those conversations at some point in time about, about transferring ownership to, if not, if not for their use, for the use of the occupants?
Yes, I think.
Not for the state use, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, you know, I think the state, you, the state is very interested in continued beneficial use of the trailers, even when this program winds down.
Okay.
The team is, is very great at communication and everyone wants what's best for, for the value of the state. And so I think, you know, when that time comes, that discussion, it will be a collaborative one.
Got, gotcha. Well, all right, that's, that's satisfying news. Anybody else have any questions or comments about, about this? Thank you for that explanation, Jordan. It was really helpful. And let the record show that Member Greider has joined us at 6:10. Okay. So without any further questions or discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
And I will say on this one, no motion needed, Chair. I will bring that grant and that lease before you all in a future meeting.
Okay, very good.
Yep.
All right then, the next item on the agenda is item 4.2, Proposed Revitalization Grant Program. Staff?
Yes, so staff have been working on this program for the last few months. This is a revitalization program to help businesses and commercial properties in the urban renewal area, really focusing on the core goals of our current urban renewal plan, which is to address play, really support businesses and jobs here in the talent area, as well as to also address impacts, meal media fire that businesses or commercial properties experienced. The main changes of this program, when it was last presented to you all, is that we really focused on emphasizing the purpose of the program within the program guidelines. You can see the writing in red highlights all the changes, the program guidelines. And the other change that we made was that in the application, we added an additional page. And that additional page is a narrative section for the applicant to describe how their project is gonna help move forward or renewal goals or address the almita fire. So that when these applications come before the board, they can have a more organic understanding of does this fit in with the priorities of this program.
Great. Member Byers?
Thank you. I'm wondering if you might be able to share your screen with that, Jordan?
Yeah, I would love to. What I'm gonna do is throw into chat a link for you all to open the TORA packet from online. Because Hector is technically the host tonight, I'm not able to share my screen without his permission, and he is still waiting to log on.
Okay, sounds great.
Let me post something in the chat for y'all.
It's okay, I can pull up the packet. Thank you.
Thanks.
I have one question. I noticed, I remember talking about, you know, a, a dollar amount, and it looks like it's $15,000. That sounds right to me. I don't remember talking about making it eligible annually, once a year, to the same property. Is that, is that what was previously discussed? I'm assuming it was, but it just seems, it seems pretty, given the number of properties that are standing and that would use this within our urban renewal district, there's not many. And it, it seems like we might find ourselves in kind of ongoing renewal with certain properties.
Yeah, I took that, as you guys will see on page 15 of the agenda packet under general terms, I added that there's a limit of one grant per property per fiscal year, except on a case-by-case approval by the board. So when I was listening to the audio from last meeting, the idea that was brought up was on a fiscal year basis, but we could absolutely remove that part of that statement, particularly recognizing that, you know, we have limited funding, we're in our kind of final years as an agency with this current plan. I did keep that case-by-case approval in there because the board had mentioned there's scenarios where there might be more than one business on a single property. And, you know, just allowing that kind of fairness and access to be at more discretion rather than some hard and fast rules. So what I'm hearing is potentially the change for that line on page 15 is to say there's a limit of one grant per property, except on a case-by-case approval by the board.
And I don't think that's such a substantive change where we, I mean, I think we could adopt it as amended if, if the board chose to. And so, I mean, it could even go down as a suggested amendment if somebody decides to fold that in. I, I don't wanna, yeah, unless we can take a consensus on that now, and then it would just be a motion as amended. Does anybody, does anybody object to that language? Member Panomaroff?
I'm just wondering if you could clarify. I was kind of reading at the same time. If you could clarify what, what change is that you're, that you're looking for.
And I can go ahead and do that, Chair. It would be to remove the words "per fiscal year" in that red text on the general terms.
Okay, got it. Thank you. No, no objection.
But it does leave flexibility, flexibility if there's more than one, I mean, there's at discretion to some degree as well, right? There's some discretion there. That's good. I think that's good. And the other question I had was I, I read through this and didn't see whether or not we were going to budget, like when we did the tree or the landscaping, we budgeted a certain amount, which means we had a certain number of grants that we were gonna offer. I think it was generous enough where, where we were able to kind of cover everybody, but, and probably Member Clark would know that better than I, but, but are you, is that how you're gonna do this, is by budgeting a certain amount per fiscal year for these and limit the number of, of grants available?
Yes, so looking at what has been budgeted this year, $100,000 was placed under grant programs. And so far, $5,000 of that has been used for the tree planting program. You know, I expect an additional $5,000 to go out over the next six months. So that leaves about $90,000 in this fiscal year. So we could help fund six projects at the full max amount if needed in this fiscal year, but then next year I would plan on budgeting separately for each of those two grant programs for the next fiscal year.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else? Member Panomaroff?
Yeah, just a question on process. When these come before us, is staff gonna have provided some sort of vetting? I know they have to fill out all the forms and go through the process. By the way, I love the step-by-step. I love, that was a really nice explanation and the examples and everything really helped me kind of understand it. But when they come before us and you all are a lot more familiar with the effects, will there be some sort of either staff recommendation or vetting that happens before, comes before us?
Yes, and I will say I can't take claim for the step-by-step process that was, you know, straight out of the city of Twolton. So thank you, Twolton. So the process is when the applicant is filling out their application, they are required to come talk to the Community Development Department of the city first to make sure the city can let them know if there's any requirements for their specific project in terms of permits or regulations to fit with city code. They will then turn in their complete application along with the Community Development Department's initials to the city, or should say to the agency, where we'll review to make sure they meet all the minimum requirements, that they're eligible business, that they're in the urban renewal boundary, that they haven't received this grant yet before. And then we will go ahead and summarize and offer recommendation to the board when we bring it to your next meeting.
Member Byers?
Yeah, just a tiny bit of feedback. I think it would make both your life easier and the people filling out the applications to put some word or character limits on those response spaces with a reminder that it's a limit, not a must-meet. Yeah.
Great thoughts. Thank you.
I think it might make the process seem more approachable and generate less for you to review. Just per application, not fewer applications.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? Well, I think that the only amendment, potential amendment that we have, if the motion is as amended, would be to drop the additional language on the, on the limit grant, grant, limiting the grant per year. So if there's no other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
And put together some draft language if need be.
Yeah, I, I also, my hat's off to you, Jordan. This is really a great, a great grant application and program. And I, you worked quite a bit over the last couple of meetings, and I'm really grateful that this is gonna be made available to our business community. I, I do know, being boots on the ground a little bit, that this is, this is something that's needed and it's gonna gratify some of the downtown businesses for sure. Member Byers, did you have a?
Ready to make a mention.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
I moved to direct staff to implement the revitalization grant program with the changes discussed in the board discussion on January 10th, 2023.
Your second?
Second.
Member Byers, what page is the motion on?
It's in the chat.
Okay, we have a motion to direct staff to implement the revitalization grant program with the changes discussed in the board discussion on January 10th, 2023. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Member Byers? Yes. Member Clark?
Yes.
Member Panomaroff?
Yes.
Member Prestizo?
Yes.
Member Paray Miller?
Yes.
Member Greider?
Yeah.
The motion carries, Chair.
Terrific. Okay, item 4.3, General Updates from the Executive Director. Staff?
Yeah, just to let you all know that we have scheduled a structural assessment of Town Hall as part of our master planning efforts. They will begin, it's DCS engineering. They will begin assessing the structure in February, and we'll have a report ready for the board by March. Their work is also gonna include some as-built drawings, so that when we do wanna move forward with any projects, we have the plans in place to do so. I will share is DCS is a historical specialist, so they will be looking at it through a historic building lens as well. And this is a reminder, could be, I just recently knew this, this is following a 2019 report that did review Town Hall and with the recommendation that a structural assessment follows that report. So this will be another piece of the puzzle. The other item I wanted to just check in with the board on is that our February meeting is going to overlap with a special meeting of city council. And so I wanted to check with you all if you wanted to cancel that meeting or reschedule the meeting. I will share that I will be scheduling a special meeting for urban renewal likely in the last two weeks of January in order to review the, the lease with Access and the grant agreement with OHCS. So with that, I would look towards the board to see if you'd like to cancel or reschedule the February meeting.
Member Panomaroff?
Yeah, I think if we're gonna have a special meeting, we might as well cancel the February meeting and pick up whatever we need in March.
Member Greider?
Sorry, Jordan, can I, can you clarify the special meeting? So that's the 14th, right? And it's a city council? Somehow I didn't have that on my calendar.
Yes, I have not sent it out yet to all the city councillors. So the, the urban renewal public review period that the city council initiated in December ends February 13th. So we're gonna schedule a special meeting February 14th to review the feedback shared with us before the public hearing on the 15th.
Perfect, okay.
So, and that's a city council meeting, correct?
That was a city council meeting.
And what time will that meeting be?
I am hoping to schedule it a little earlier because I know it is Valentine's Day, and for those that have Valentine traditions, wanted to give space to be with loved ones.
Really thoughtful. Hey, I'm wondering though, I feel like the two items that we're talking about for the special meeting in January are pretty like housekeeping. Like, does, does it feel, I mean, I, I just would ask the staff and, and the members of the board to consider that we might be able to just cut right through that work and not have to schedule an extra meeting or an extra meeting date. Do you feel like it's gonna be hefty contract work, Jordan?
I think I just wanna make sure you all have eyes on it before agreeing to having the agency signature on those agreements. I think it'll be a fast meeting. I will need to schedule it before February 1st because that is when the agreements will need to be in effect by.
All right, yeah, well, I was hoping to eliminate another meeting date, but that sounds prudent, so. And I would expect that we would get it before the meeting, so we could read it anyway. So, yeah, all right, yeah, definitely wanna have eyes on it. That's no question there. All right, sounds like we have a plan. Anybody feel differently about that? All right. Jordan, back to you.
Great, that concludes just my general updates, and I'm ready for the next agenda item.
So the next agenda item is item five, items from the chair or board members. Anybody? Member Clark?
Yeah, I just wanted to remind you all of the wildfire. Remind you all of the uh wildfire and urban landscape symposium that is happening Friday, January twentieth. It's gonna be a fantastic uh event and it's a really important conversation that um talent is taking the lead in. Um, in creating, um, we're gonna have, uh, a. Uh, the OSU Southwest Regional Fire Specialist. Um, from the extension office, we're gonna have. Uh, the US Forest Service, uh, Research Forester Jeffrey Donovan, who just published a. Paper demonstrating that the trees planted in Portland over the past thirty years. Saved an appreciable number of lives during the twenty-one, twenty-one heat dome. Uh, we're gonna have Brian Ballstad from, uh, Jackson County Fire District Five there. And, um, representative from ODF, Freshwater Trust. Um, so if y'all are able to make time, um, for all or part of that on a week from this Friday. Uh, shoot, uh, Mr. Mike Oxendine an email and he'll make sure there's a spot for you.
So, did you say that if we wanted to have a seat at, a seat at the presentation to shoot Ma- Mike a email?
Yeah, correct. So, um, there's only a hundred and sixty seats in the, um, Camelot Theater. Um, and so the registration is free and, you know, registration is an email to Mike, um. Um, nothing beyond that, but, um, additionally, uh, um, I believe our, uh, uh. Uh, state representative, uh, and state senator, uh, Pam and Jeff are both gonna be there and and heard also that a representative from Wyden's office is gonna be. Present as well, so, um, yeah, it's gonna be a, a cool event and, uh, hope to see some of y'all there.
I, I just want to say also before I start taking, um, comments, I, I sent, uh, Dan Hauser. A, a thank you note for, um, offering up Camelot Theater, um, I think it. Uh, it lends a, an, an interesting kind of air, um. Um, feel to the whole event and, and I think, um, it was a really great community-minded thing to do, uh, for the Camelot Theater to, to. Provide us with that great venue. Um, okay, thanks. Uh, I will get an email off to Mike. That's good to know. I wouldn't have known that. Um. Member buyers and then Jordan.
Uh, actually, that's a question for Member Clark. Could you say the time again for January twentieth at what?
Yeah, it's actually going to run from eight to five-thirty.
Eight AM to five-thirty PM?
Yeah, I believe, or I, I might have an earlier version. It might be eight to four. Is that right, Jordan? Yeah, this is an earlier version of the flyer I'm looking at. It's, it's eight to four.
Thank you.
Member buyers. Uh, Jordan, and then, um, member Penomar?
And I would like to tap onto that. Um, the speakers that are speaking at that event are hosts and speakers that focus on property owners and what they can do. On their properties all the way up to policymakers. If you have limited time on Friday. I recommend in your email to Mike, ask recommendations of those that would be, uh, most pertinent, especially for policymakers. Um, to understand the benefits of urban forestry and things that can get put in place for those that have limited time.
Okay, thank you, Jordan. Um, and member buyers, your hand is still up. Member Penomar?
Yeah, I just had that same follow-up question, uh, for, for councillor Member Clark. Um, so I see that on the flyer, the speakers, I'm not seeing, um. You know, time slots, what happens when, so. Is that?
I don't have access to that, um, right now, so, um. Uh, I would just, uh, inquire with Mike as Jordan.
Okay, that's right. Thanks.
Member Prestizo?
Yeah, is this gonna be recorded at all, so you can watch it after?
Yeah, um, we are intending to do that and I think those details are still being worked out. We've been considering some different options, um, for how to get that done. But, um, I think we're gonna get that done. We certainly hope to and to, so that people can watch it afterwards and, and, uh, can reach a broader audience.
Yeah, I'd really like to be there. I just can't swing that day, so it'd be good if there's a way. And I, hopefully you, it won't just be like one long video. Maybe you can break it up based on topic or something.
Sure, yeah.
Thanks.
Good advice.
Member buyers?
All right, this is such a cool thing. I'm so glad you brought this up, Member Clark. Um, I am wondering. And I, you don't need to know the answers. I can also ask Mike, but I'm wondering if there's been a press release that's gone out about this. And a, there's a really interesting segment that Southern Oregon PBS now does about really amazing things happening in the Rogue Valley community. And they go and they film it and they feature them as thirty-minute-long specials every month. And I think that this might be a really great thing to notify them about. So that they perhaps would come in it, cover one of the speakers or highlights from throughout the day. And then it would be aired on PBS and available on their website also.
I think that sounds fantastic.
Uh, Jordan?
Member buyers, can you, we say the name of that program one more time?
Let me look it up for you really quickly because they just changed the name. I'll drop it in the, the chat.
Thank you so much.
Proof of conversation tonight, yay. Okay, are there any other? Is the, the link to the city, oh yeah, so the city link you put up in the chat is, is a link to the flyer. In case anybody. Needs to see that. All right, um, so are any other notifications that we can do to make sure that, I mean, I, what I. What I think I learned from this discussion that I really wasn't contemplating before is that there's. Elements of this that will, um, benefit individual property owners. And, um, I'm wondering if, uh. If there, I've seen this really well covered on social media. Can it go, is it, can it go out with the water bill or? Are we behind the eight ball on that? I'm, I'm just wondering if there's a way to. Is it in the flash? Yes, okay, good, 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 that's.
Um, and I will share, I know that we have had sixty community members sign up so far. Um, and we still got another ten days to go when just some really big media pushes this week, so hopefully we'll see that number go up.
Terrific. Well done, everybody. So exciting and so impactful. Um, all right, is there anything else for, um, this agenda item? Then the next agenda item is written communications. There are none, so it looks like we've come to adjournment in record time. Uh, we'll be adjourning this meeting at six-thirty-three. Good work, everybody. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you all.
Thanks all.
Jordan?
Hey, Hector.
I'm so sorry about that. I, um. The updates needed updates and then after all those updates were updated, I needed more updates, so.
Lesson learned. I'm glad you updated and lesson learned is that you might be able to get your Tuesday night back since I can handle the, the note taking on my end too.
All right, awesome. You, you were able to record the whole thing.
I was, yeah. So have a great rest of your evening, Hector. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
And I'll see you tomorrow.
See you tomorrow.